We call the meeting to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Portemblatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Okay, all present and accounted for. James, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure, and turning camera to the flag. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
James.
Who's the time?
Approval of the agenda. If there is any changes to be made, I only have the two items. I put the presentation on, let me give just a little introductory before I turn it over to Rudy. Needs no introduction, but I'm going to give you one anyway. The city manager and I we talked with Rudy and Chris, what's your boss's last name?
Chris Thompson.
Thompson, okay.
Yes.
Remember it, I should have, I didn't want to. Anyway, we had a good conversation and it's, to me, it's becoming clear that our desire not to inconvenience or cause difficulties for some of our residents as the Edison Company tries to do their part in keeping the community fire safe, that it is just not going to be possible to do all the work that needs to be done to make us safe and do it in a very narrow time slot. Our staff has been very good at working with Edison and Edison's done best they can to cooperate to do mostly if not all nighttime work. But there are some things now that not only can't be done at night, but there aren't enough hours in the night to do it. And so my deal with Rudy and Chris was that if they would come down and, you know, give a kind of a briefing to the council so everybody understood where we are, that, and if in the future, now I shouldn't say in the future, but if we continue with the practice that Edison doesn't want to irritate their customers anymore than we want to have our voters disturbed. So they're going to do their very best and I think we, personally, I think we have to trust them to do it right until they demonstrate that they're being insensitive to our needs. And the way in which we can do that, I think, is is that if Edison will just furnish our city manager with the justification for why certain things have to be done during the day at a certain time, now that we're reopening, now that the schools are, school year is closed, the protection we tried to provide everybody while they were being, you know, staying safe at home is going to have to be a little more flexible. So Rudy, you want to take it from there?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor Johnston, Councilmember Mr. Vega. I'm Rudy Gonzalez, Southern California Edison's Government Relation Manager for the Ojai area. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I came to work for Edison over 37 years ago, starting as a meter reader with my very first routes covering the Ojai Valley. So I'm very familiar with Ojai and the surrounding communities. I have a couple of objectives this evening. The first is to explain and highlight the fire risks that exist in the Ojai Valley. The second is to convince you all of the importance of allowing Edison to move forward with daytime work so that we can meet our obligations related to wildfire risk reduction. Following California's historic 2017 fires, the CPUC adopted and introduced new fire safety regulations that caused the state's investor-owned utilities to step up efforts to reduce the significant risk of wildfires, including critical upgrades to both our distribution and transmission systems. These regulations included identifying the three-tier levels of fire risk depicted in the CPUC's Fire Threat Map. The purpose of the map is to delineate areas in the state where there are both elevated and extreme risks from utility-associated wildfires. I can tell you the entire Ojai Valley area is identified as Tier 3 on the Fire Threat Map, where there is an extreme risk for utility-associated wildfires. Development of the Fire Threat Map was overseen by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, also known as CAL FIRE. The state's fire safety regulations mandate that each electric investor-owned utility must file an annual report that contains a fire prevention plan that includes specified information for its overhead electric facilities in the high-fire-threat districts. Edison submitted its first wildfire mitigation plan in 2019. This was the first of annual submissions as required by SB 901 legislation that was passed in 2018 and serves as the first step towards addressing the rapidly growing wildfire challenges in California. Earlier this year, we filed our 2020 through 2022 wildfire mitigation plan, which was emailed to the city in February. I'd like to take a moment to highlight the components of our 2020 wildfire mitigation plan submission. The plan builds on the progress made in 2019 to help prevent wildfires and protect the safety of our customers and our communities. The plan, which we are obligated to fulfill, has several key components that are directly linked to work we plan to complete in the city of Ojai. Enhanced overhead inspections that focus on equipment issues that could lead to a utility-caused wildfire are typically completed during the early part of the year. These inspections go beyond our regularly scheduled inspection cycles and result in what we refer to as notifications or scopes of work to remedy issues we find as a result of these inspections. Examples of these issues include deteriorated poles and damaged crossarms or insulators. Depending on the severity of the issue, we have a prescribed amount of time in order to complete the necessary repairs. These are what we refer to as compliance states that are monitored by the CPUC and are what drive the need to complete the work in a timely manner. The grid design and system harvesting part of our plan is more programmatic and includes projects like replacement of bare wire with cover conductor. Many of the ignitions associated with utility infrastructure are caused by objects that contact power lines or by conductor-to-conductor contact. Cover conductor has proven to be an effective prevention measure. We are targeting the highest-risk areas for near-term deployment, as well as areas where cover conductor can reduce the need for public safety power shut-offs or PSPs. We're in the process of completing a cover conductor project on the Thatcher Circuit and hope to initiate work on a cover conductor project for the Patricia Circuit later this month. To give you an idea on the scope of work associated with these reconductor projects, there are 32 separate work orders associated with the Patricia Circuit reconductor project alone. A single work order could include both replacement of bare wire and replacement of poles that support the cover conductor. Combined, these two projects will account for replacement of over 60 line miles of conductor and over 1,000 poles replaced. This includes work both within the city of Ojai and the surrounding unincorporated areas of the Ojai Valley. Installation of fast-acting fuses throughout our system will reduce electrical current when there's a wire-down event and segment circuits to minimize the number of customers impacted during a PSPs event. Situational awareness work includes installation of high-definition cameras and a network of weather stations to monitor location-specific real-time conditions as we consider PSPs implementation. The cameras will provide 90% coverage of the high-fire-risk areas within our service territory. Our vegetation management program will continue with the focus on maintaining adequate clearance between tree branches and our power lines. Tall trees up to 200 feet from the high-voltage power lines will be assessed to determine if they could fall into or have vegetation like palm fronds that could blow into power lines. We will also expand efforts to clear brush surrounding poles. The final component of our wildfire mitigation plan is the use of public safety power shut-offs or PSPs. While we expect the frequency of PSPs to lessen as more of our wildfire mitigation plan mitigations are deployed, it will remain available as a tool to reduce wildfire risk during severe weather and high-fire potential index events. The planned work we hope to proceed with in your community will help reduce impacts of PSPs. In regard to planned work in the city of Ojai, we have had a bit of a challenge due to restricted work hours as directed by city staff. We fully understand the impact COVID-19 crisis has had in your community. We work with many of our local communities on how best to proceed with critical wildfire mitigation plan work while being sensitive to the fact that many residents were working from home and students were attending courses online from home. We were able to strike a balance of completing daytime and nighttime work with most of our communities. I provided you with a copy of a joint letter signed by the Director of CAL FIRE, the Director of CAL OES, and the President of the CPUC. The letter clearly spells out the state's expectation that despite the COVID-19 crisis, the investor-owned utilities must continue to prioritize and expedite wildfire mitigation and wildfire risk reduction work as spelled out in our wildfire mitigation plan. Failure to do so would subject Edison to significant exposure and increase both fire risk and the need to implement public safety power shut-offs. Our number-one priority as a company is to reduce fire risk. The fact that we had two fires in Ventura County last week should remind us of the very real threat we're all facing. Just as you all have an obligation to protect the interests of your residents, we have an obligation to do everything possible to ensure we're operating an electrical system that is as fire-safe as we can make it. Unfortunately, there's more work pending than there are hours currently available to complete this work. Although we've completed a significant amount of work during the overnight hours, it is the overwhelming preference of both Edison crews and our contractors to complete work during the day. Public and employee safety are primary concern as we complete this work. Completing this work during the daytime hours allows us to be safer and much more productive. As state and county restrictions are lifted, residents have added flexibility and are no longer stuck at home. With that, I would respectfully request that city staff be given the direction and authority to allow Edison to begin construction work during the daytime hours. I thank you for your time this evening and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, do we have questions for Rudy? Bill?
Rudy, are you able to, in your, I understand it's assumed that there'd be a lot of communication back and forth between Edison and the city manager or whoever he designates. Is there a way of having some guidelines as to the maximum duration of planned construction outages and is that part of the communication to the city manager when you're looking at a particular schedule?
Sure, when we, when we went into the COVID-19 crisis, we changed the way we communicate planned outage information to all of our cities. And I'm hoping that the city staff is receiving the critical work orders that we identify. It's kind of a rolling two-week window of work that we have planned in the city. And it identifies the type of work, the duration, and our proposed start time for the work. So there is definitely enhanced communication as we're maneuvering through the COVID crisis. And we've been working very closely with, with the city manager, Public Works Director, Mr. Grant, and really, they're doing everything they can to try to accommodate us. Unfortunately, we are in a position where we literally have more work than there are hours in the day. So hoping that we can reach some type of a compromise and start being able to do some daytime work.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Randy?
I just have a couple. Rudy, do you have an idea, do you know how many crews are actually working in Ojai at any given time? And, and the areas that they're working in and is there a way to coordinate that where maybe there's only two crews allowed to work in the Ojai area at any given time? I mean, is that something that could be worked out with, with the city manager? That's one question. The other area, the other question I have is that you are installing, is the city of Ojai have any access to that information? Or is that Southern California Edison only? That's the second question. The third question is, the information on your weather station and your camera, your cameras, is that information available to Police Department, Gray Grant, City Manager at any time?
It's available to the general public. Anyone can access the high-definition cameras and anyone can access the data that's being provided by the weather stations that we've installed. And I'd be happy to share those links to the city staff. In regards to your first question about limiting the number of crews.
Not limiting, but do we know how many crews?
Yeah, you know, I don't know how many we typically have in the day. I can tell you that over the course of the next couple of weeks, I think we've got 12 days of work that we have scheduled. It really depends on the size and the scope of a particular work order. If we're changing out, you know, two or three poles and several spans of overhead wire and replacing it with cover conductor, we're likely going to have two or three crews working that single job. So I don't know that there's a way to limit the number of crews while still achieving our objective of getting the scope of work completed that we plan to.
So maybe it's not, maybe it's not the crew size, it's the job description. So in other words, if you had three crews working on one job on the east end of, on the east end of city limits and another crew on the west end, whether it's one or three or four, that's what I'm looking at. Is there any way that we could work together on limiting the number of projects that are going on at any given time in Ojai?
We can, we can do our very best, yeah. We can do our very best to evaluate and determine if that's possible. And we, you know, we certainly want to minimize any inconvenience that we create by having our crews on the road. And we can certainly look at that and try to coordinate, maybe having just one, one job going in the city per day.
And then what percent of Ojai is completed and not completed? Do you have that information?
I don't have a percentage of what's completed in the city and outside the city in the Ojai Valley. I'm sorry.
Okay, and then while you're.
Just a second, let's stay with that question. Is that going, could that be made available?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can provide you the scope of the, of the cover conductor work and let you know how much of it is within the city and how much of it is outside the city. The Patricia Circuit, we haven't started yet, the Thatcher Circuit, which also runs through the community, is about one-third complete. So I, we can, we can definitely show you the areas where the work still needs to take place and a timeline associated with that work.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, my final, my last question is, is regarding light fixtures that are attached to these poles. Is there an opportunity at this point in time to change these light fixtures out to meet our dark sky ordinance and also maybe to convert to LED? And is that part of the plan?
So we are currently working with the County of Ventura to change out, to convert the high-pressure sodium vapor in the unincorporated areas of the county. I'm not sure that we've had conversations with city staff about that project, but we can certainly get you in the queue. It's a conversion project that doesn't cost the city anything. It's on Edison's dime and we can certainly get the city in the queue to have that work done and hopefully within the next year or two.
Well, I'm just trying to think about how you could do it in conjunction with the activities you're doing now.
That may be a challenge because that's a whole different scope of work that's managed by a different departments. So, but we can, we can do our very best to try to coordinate if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions or comments? I have two. One, I want, want to ask for a little clarification, Rudy. When you talked about how everybody would prefer to work in the daytime, my understanding was is that you were going to continue to work at night as much as possible and you'd be working day and night in order to get the full backlog caught up. Is that correct?
We will still conduct work at night if it's safe to do so. But if there's an issue that we believe exists in regards to public or employee safety, we will definitely state our preference to work during the day, but we will continue with night work as appropriate, yes.
Okay, so it's not like you're shifting over to the day?
No, we're not, we're not completely shifting over. We're trying to create, find a balance here.
Okay, because my thought was is that we needed to give you enough hours to be able to do all the work, not just the hours being worked. The second part of my comment is, is that it would be very helpful to the staff and to the council if the Edison Company could give us as much summary information as to the importance and necessity for the work being done. So when we get the complaint, we can just simply, you know, we don't have to make something up or blame you guys. We can tell the people, I'm sorry that this has to happen, but this is the reason why it's being done and why it is in everybody's best interest from a safety standpoint.
I appreciate that comment. And when, when we went into the COVID-19 crisis, we sent out a communication to all of our cities informing them that we were only moving forward with what we refer to as critical work, work related to wildfire risk, work related to public or public safety issues. So we've been holding off on the routine maintenance work and focusing solely on fire mitigation work. So all the work that we're doing now is related to our efforts to fulfill our obligations related to our wildfire mitigation plan.
Okay, but Mike, what I'm requesting, you may already be doing this, but I'm requesting that if there is a way through your office that you can provide James with, you know, kind of a script that says we are working the Patricia Circuit because we have uninsulated wires that are, you know, it doesn't have to be very long, but something that we can explain to the people. I'm not sure they'll listen if they're upset, but at least if they get a reasonable response, I think most people will be understanding and cooperating.
We can absolutely do that.
Bill?
Yeah, one last question, Rudy. Has the, have the protocol, the reset protocols been changed? You know, some of the fires were directly related apparently to lines, major lines being brought down and then attempting to be reset without inspection. Has that protocol been pretty well changed?
So during, yeah.
Automatic re-energize attempts themselves seem to aggravate some of the fire conditions. Has that protocol been changed?
Yeah, it's always been a protocol. Whenever we have bulletin 22 conditions, which are high-wind conditions, we deactivate our automated equipment. So if there is a fault on the system, somebody has to go out and manually operate a switch. If the switch opens up, it's not automated the way, the way it normally would be. And that's all within the high-fire-defined areas.
The high-wind conditions and everything. And the other thing too is, what is the protocol for when you put in conductor separators even with covered wires? You know, because even covered wires in high-wind conditions, can't they break the insulation? They start slapping each other?
Oh, so the covered conductor is a pretty hardy wire, so it's much heavier than the bare wire. And, and there's not going to be a need for spacers on the cover conductor.
Okay.
Because they'll be insulated. So that will solve.
Even if they're slapping under high wind, they're not going to break the insulation.
Right, no, they won't.
Okay.
It's completely insulated.
Okay.
Along the bare wire.
Randy?
Mayor, I just had one, one final question. It was, Rudy, you started the conversation saying that you sent these protocols out in February of this year. I'd just like to ask staff that we coordinate this as an agendized meeting on an annual basis, that if we're receiving this information on a bi-yearly basis, that I would think that it'd be important that council receive it and have a, and then, and then maybe, maybe, Rudy, from your perspective, quarterly or bi-quarterly, something that just keeps us refreshed and in the loop as to the who, what, why, and how you're proceeding. I think that'd be beneficial to all of us and the community.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
And I'm certainly comfortable with your working with our city manager to kind of up the, up the pace of mitigation on this fire risk personally.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else on this? Rudy, thank you very much. I didn't realize we've known each other for almost 37 years.
Nice flying by, we must be having a good time.
Yeah, right, okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Mayor?
Yes, Randy.
Thank you for agendizing this. It was, it was a much-needed conversation, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have only one item on the agenda, but it's a fairly controversial and complex issue, so James, you want to kick it off? Even if you don't want to, would you kick it off?
Yeah, now that the anticipation has boiled up here, let me, let me share my screen. We have a presentation, there's a lot of things to talk about. And so we put together a presentation, we want to walk through it and focus on a couple of key things. First off, we want to walk through the design. We've heard recently at city council meetings that there were some questions and some confusion about the design. We want to walk through it and kind of try to lay that out clearly. And then we will, towards the end of the conversation, talk about what grant funding this project has and what, what the costs of the project are expected to be. So we'll try to lay it out like that. I think big picture, the point, one point we just want to make clearly is that, you know, this is a, overall, it's a good thing. We have, we've been able to leverage a lot of grant funding to make improvements to Ojai Avenue and Maricopa. Obviously, there's controversy and questions about the actual design, which I think we can look, walk through and talk about. But I think big picture, you know, once we nail those things down, it's, it's just, it's a good thing for the community and it's a, it's an opportunity that it's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to do a project this major for a city our size with the, the funding challenges we have to be able to do something like this. So with that, we'll just kind of walk through quickly. We have some new renderings and we want to show those just to give people a feel for what it'll look like. And we'll try, I'll try to keep the presentation brief and then we can always go back and look as we go. But this rendering is color-coded and it shows the major parts and components of the project with some renderings as well. So you'll notice obviously the hot topic here is the orange striping here shows where the proposed lane reduction with parking-separated bike lanes will, will be added. The pink striping that's shown throughout is sidewalk infill to, to help pedestrian traffic. And I walk that area frequently and know that sidewalk infill would be a big benefit for us. The yellow here is bike lanes along Ojai Avenue. And then the last part here, the purplish, is a Class 2 bike lanes with trees. And so we have some renderings that we'll show right now, but just big picture and scope, that's the, this is the, when we say ATP, which people have been hearing for five years now, this project has been moving, this is what we're talking about, is Maricopa Highway all the way through Ojai Avenue. And the improvements that we are looking to, or that we are proposing are as follows. Might as well get the, the big one out of the way first. This is what's proposed currently for Maricopa Highway. Just to explain it to someone who's never seen this before, somebody's watching, is there'd be driving lanes on each side, one driving lane, followed by a parking lane that would have landscaping potentially, either trees or landscaping, and we'll show you what those could look like as well, with parked vehicles as well to provide a buffer for the bike lanes. And you'll notice that's on both sides of the street. And so, you know, obviously, that's, that's a pretty major change from the four-lane highway that is currently there. So that, that is, we're expecting that that will be a big topic of conversation. This is what it currently looks like. One reason, talking to, you know, the people that have worked on this project for, for a few years now, is one of the reasons why this is proposed is that people turning onto the highway in various areas, it's a challenge to turn when there's two cars coming and you can't see around them. We talked about the, the left turn from Creek Road onto the 33, how they, they have a similar issue turning across two lanes, and everybody knows that's a, a area that most Ojai Valley residents would like to see modified. And I think Caltrans had proposed some modifications there as well. So what it could look like, as part of our discussion today, is this is the one lane in each direction with landscaping. And well, well, the next slide shows what it would look like with trees, but it's landscaping and parked vehicles here. I think my little arrow is showing up. And then bike lanes on the other side of the landscaping and the parked vehicles. And we've got, you know, one of the basic questions we get asked is why there would need to be a lane reduction. Basically, it boils down to if we want parked vehicles and a bike lane, uh, that's, that's why the lane reduction was proposed. So that would be. Part of the uh, discussion of alternative options. Uh, just showing uh, version two here with trees instead of landscaping. So uh. Uh, this image shows kind of a low-hanging branch here. We'd obviously try to keep that from happening. Um, next section of Maricopa is near the hospital, uh, across from the hospital. This is what it looks like existing. And what it would look like uh, with this project is it would be bike lanes, uh, two-way bike lanes are proposed in this area. No parking is proposed uh, at this portion as it, as it narrows a little bit and the two-lane bike uh, bike lanes are proposed instead. So that, um, so those are the, you know, the designs for Maricopa. Uh, we'll come back. I, I, I want to try to just kind of lay out the, the whole vision before we uh, get into this in-depth, but. Um, we also then have Ojai Avenue east of the Y. Here's what it currently looks like. And here's uh, what's proposed relatively simple bike lanes. So uh, not as major obviously as, as the Maricopa changes. But it proposes these bike lanes at the Y. Vons, uh, if you can see my arrow, Vons is about where uh, my arrow is here. And this is the um. The large file, okay. And then this area here is where the uh, Wine Garden uh, Memorial is. Um, Weinberger, Weinberger Memorial, sorry. And uh. So this would add bike lanes in those areas and uh, and would make that a lot more bikable than it currently is that. Anybody who's been on a bike in this area and has gone through the Vons parking lot and curb cuts knows that this is a challenge. Uh, next big section is Ojai Avenue. And uh, this shows a rendering of the bike lanes being added on either side of Ojai Avenue. It's a five-foot bike lane. Uh, and then the uh, one of the components of this project is it'll add landscaping in certain areas that'll provide shade for people walking. And so looking at what it looks like currently. And this is what it would, uh, what it would look like as proposed with these bike lanes and striping added to Ojai Avenue. Similarly, Ojai Avenue at Rincon. The bike lanes added here. And then throughout Ojai Avenue in, in sections, and we'll, we'll look at some of those sections uh, in depth when we talk about cost. Uh, the, the part, uh, Ojai Avenue includes some parts of uh, our sidewalk infill throughout certain portions of the project. So as proposed, we have sec, some sections that are decomposed uh, granite and. And some sections that are, that are actual sidewalks. So another section uh, on Ojai Avenue that would have some of those DG sidewalks added. So again, there'd be four. And after the sidewalk and the bike lanes. And then this one is a, I think a big, big one that um, you know, we don't talk about very often, but. Um, Ojai Avenue from Canyatta to Blanche, this uh, portion of the street right now, anybody who walks that and sees the cars coming at them knows that it's, it can be scary. Uh, and so um, this would add several sections of curb extension. That would um, give the pedestrian some more um, uh, delineation and protection. So this is what it looks like currently. Again, the vehicle's coming down. Sometimes you can't tell which way they're going to turn. And what it could look like with those curb extensions added and some landscaping uh, would be a lot more um. You know, a lot more uh, pedestrian-friendly is the goal. Just uh, we've, we've developed a couple of alternate options. Some have the, some show the trees and some show uh, more of the um. Landscaping or rock medians in different areas. So that is the difference between this version and this version. And then uh, one of the areas that we um, wanted to make sure to lay out because obviously it's, you know, the trademark of Ojai is the arcade block. Um, this is what it currently looks like. We would uh, add um, some curb extensions. Are proposed under the project, which would make it look more like this. Um, and obviously these uh, curb extensions are intended to kind of slow down traffic a little bit and um, get people. Um, uh, allow the pedestrians to stand here uh, and be more visible. And uh, we included this picture, just uh, we just thought it was interesting. This is the arcade block a hundred years ago and uh. We noted that there were trees uh, then. So this would be a little bit of a return to form. Not as many horses nowadays. Ojai Avenue east of downtown, here's what it looks like currently. As proposed, it would add bike lanes and striping. And that would uh, be added down, I believe it's all the way to Gridley. Similarly, just from another perspective here. And um, so these are all the uh, the updated renderings and some of those were existing, but um. But um, uh, these are the renderings and we'll get to the um. Uh, next section. I did want to say, I guess I said that it would slow down uh, traffic, the curb section, extensions. And my notes are that it will actually, it's intended to shorten the wait time for cars. I'm sorry. Um, so those are the renderings and we can go back to those, but just a couple of more points we wanted to show. Um, we have uh, this rendering that shows the areas of uh, throughout the valley that are two lanes currently versus four lanes. The red is the four-lane section. The yellow is the two-lane section. So you can see the uh, the Maricopa Highway and there's very little red. So uh, from the traffic engineering perspective, the thought is that the um, you know, the. Section that is four lanes currently is so minor in the scheme of things that the reduction to two lanes. Doesn't make as much of an impact as uh, as far as adding to uh. Uh, vehicle travel time as one may expect, but uh, we know that that is a um, you know, hot topic and one that. Uh, people that drive it every day will feel differently. Uh, also, we just wanted to include, we've presented this prior, but the traffic volume for the uh, parts of the project. Um, one, every, I think everybody's aware, Ojai Avenue is the uh, you know, the heart of, of Ojai as far as traffic goes and the. Uh, average traffic count is shown here and it's far higher here than it is anywhere else, else in the valley. Uh, this section of Ojai Avenue, there's average daily trips of twenty-two thousand five hundred with a peak of twenty-two hundred per hour. And uh, in this section, it's eighteen thousand five hundred with a peak of almost two thousand. Maricopa's about half of that currently, so. And then uh. We've been seeing, I think we've all seen this graphic a lot, uh, cause it's come up with various uh. Various projects and I, and a lot of cities refer to this now as uh, as people start talking about the, you know, the reduced speed limits, uh, increasing pedestrian safety. Um, the statistic that is important to remember is that at, traveling at twenty miles per hour, nine out of ten pedestrians would survive an accident. And when you double that speed to forty, only one out of ten pedestrians would survive that accident. And so that's a uh. Uh, an important uh, part of traffic engineering. Um, I'll run through these. There's a couple of slides here on costs and we'll run through these and then we can go back and uh, and. And look more closely, but um, we included this in the staff report. There is currently, including the demonstration project, which is uh, you know, a, the first phase and it's, it's uh. Somewhat separate, although it is part of the project. It's, it's kind of a standalone as well. So including the demonstration project um, and the construction grant. Uh, we have approximately three-point-two-three-three uh, million available for this project in grant funding. Uh, obviously, the demonstration project is expected to um, to take up that whole amount. We also noted that there's right-of-way procurement and design work. So what will be left for construction will be two-point-three million dollars. And then as we noted in the report, we wanted to make sure we included all costs over the last five years. And currently, the city has uh, spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the project. Uh, also, one of the things uh, we'll talk about um, as we go through this project is that. We have identified some other grant opportunities. Obviously, they're not guaranteed. We would have to apply for them and, and try to seek them, but there. There may be other grant opportunities available uh, if we choose to uh, pursue those. And uh, this is kind of the bulk of, I think, uh, the, the uh, report. And so I'll try to go through it. Kind of high level and then we can get more into it, but. We tried to lay out Maricopa Highway and Ojai Avenue to show what is being proposed on each and what the costs of those. Um, uh, components are. Maricopa Highway would be um. Uh, is currently projected to take up about one million dollars of the uh, grant funding. Uh, that one million dollars, the biggest chunk is the four pedestrian crossing improvement curb extensions. Uh, there's also uh, costs associated with um, the um. Lane reduction, uh, striping, the adding the class-four bike lanes, including the landscaping, which is a large portion. The sidewalk infill at Ben Franklin's is uh, approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. Bike trail modifications at the Y are actually a, a lower chunk than I thought. They're only about a hundred thousand dollars. And then um, there's some Nordoff High School improvements, although the parking lot modifications and improvements we've discussed recently would be an additional cost. That hasn't yet been included in the budget for this project. So the Maricopa Highway improvements total a million dollars. Uh, and we went through parts that could be removed, such as uh, if the lane reduction were to be removed, that would reduce about three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars from the project. Uh, and there's um, uh, additional items that could be removed, such as landscaping and irrigation. And then Ojai, the Ojai Avenue part of the project is about two million dollars and the bulk of that goes to the thirteen pedestrian crossing improvements. Uh, which is almost a million dollars on its own, with uh, the next biggest chunk being sidewalk infill at about seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. And then the remainder going to bike lanes and uh, striping and tree infill. And um. We uh, wanted to provide some information, the thirteen pedestrian crossing improvements that total almost a million dollars. We've actually made some improvements to some of these crosswalks recently, such as the Canyatta Street Crosswalk. We, we added. And our, our RFB stands for the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons, which basically means those flashing lights at the crosswalk. So we've added those at Canyatta Street. We've added those at Blanche. So as part of this project, uh, we've already, we had already done that uh, through separate funding, but as part of the project. We still would add curb extensions to those crosswalks. And then curb extensions to Ventura Street and the Arcade Center. Uh, add the uh, rapid, or the beacons in uh, on Arcade East and the curb extensions. Uh, and then as you uh, you, you can kind of uh, follow along there that there's the uh. Additional crosswalks and whether we are adding beacons to them or just curb extensions to them. They're listed there. So um. Last slide, and then we can go back uh, as, as needed, but the last slide is the schedule for the project. The design phase is expected to be uh, complete by the end of the uh, year. We are uh. With this report, we are at sixty percent uh, designed. Uh, and uh, we would come back uh, in coming months with, with the, I believe it's the ninety percent. Um, we also expect to launch the Maricopa Highway Lane Reduction Demonstration Project. Uh, in, in either July or August. Obviously, that one has been challenging because we were trying to launch it when there's school and football. And uh, the coronavirus pandemic has made that uh, difficult, if not impossible at this point. So um. It's uh, projected to start in July or August. Uh, Caltrans final design approval is expected in December. We can make modifications to it still. I know that's been a, a question a lot as we can modify that as, as we uh. Proceed with our demonstration project. And then finally, construction would be expected to start in the summer or fall of twenty-twenty-one and be completed in about a year. So uh, those are the basics. Again, we wanted to start by just refreshing everybody's memory and providing some updated renderings of what this project like. Could actually look like. Uh, and with that, I, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, James. Uh. Who would like to kick it off? Suzie?
Well, I'm already ready to make a motion to approve all four recommendations, but I'll wait for the right time.
And a second.
First, yeah, my first uh, question of Jane, and first of all, James, thank you for this excellent presentation. Um, I think it's very important that we make this available to the public because there's so many, there are many misconceptions about the project. So um, can you assure us that it will be posted on the city website, this, these slides?
Yeah, that's something uh, with, with getting these new renderings done, the goal was to get some better, clearer information that we'll put on the ATP website.
Yeah, and then I just want to um.
Well, the presentation James just made, you know, should be uh, maybe easily accessible, because I think it answers for. Many people's questions as to what we're trying to do, whether they agree, is that another question?
Yes, yeah, it'll also be available on, on YouTube and all of that. So, yeah, I just want to, oh, excuse me. Can I continue or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want the public to be aware that the time, there's a, uh, in the, in the staff report, there's a timeline for this project that goes back five years. And this is actually the twenty-first uh, city council meeting that we've discussed this. There have been uh, twenty-four public outreach uh, meetings. And uh, the police, and I want to repeat again that the police, we've met with the police and fire department, the hospital. Um, there have been neighborhood planning um, efforts. This project is thoroughly vetted. It's not something that just came out of thin, thin air. And um, it, it seems like we, we received at five o'clock or a little bit after five. We received um, a lot of emails and forty-two of these emails um, were all the same. They objected. To the city spending five hundred thousand. In funding, and I thought maybe we should clear that up, because I believe that's a false claim. Um, that, that seems to be the main objection is that, that we should not be taking money out of the city coffers during a pandemic. So perhaps we could address that one more time.
Okay, James, you want to talk about?
Yes, and so I think the challenge with it is, it is a multi-year project. We are, uh, we have obtained. A, a variety of grants. We still think there may be some available, but obviously, to be fair, you know, it's not guaranteed either. Uh, but to, to address those comments, we currently have two-point-three million dollars available for construction. Uh, if we do all of the things that we listed in this report, the cost is anticipated to be about uh, about three million dollars. So there is a gap that we either need to obtain more grants for. Uh, or uh, one thing we could do at this point is still move forward with the design and. We could, we'd still have the option to remove components later if we don't obtain more grants, but there, you know, it's the um. It's not that we would take this funding from the general fund necessarily, because it would, it would come down to multiple options. Council can reduce it now. They can reduce it later. They can, uh, we can uh, try to obtain grants. Uh, so it is a little more complicated than that, but um, there is a uh, a projected gap at this point. And, and the last thing, if I can add one more thing is, is uh, we did note in the report that there, uh, when we get the bids. They can range uh, anywhere, you know, up to twenty-five percent. So there's a possibility, we, we tried to be. Realistic and conservative. There's a possibility that the gap could be uh, you know, less uh, once we bid it out, so.
Or possibly more, just depending on circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was.
So Mayor. Mayor, I think that it's um, uh, it might be appropriate tonight, because I know this is going to go back and forth. That maybe each council person respond or request or make um, one point and then go through the rest of us. So that we can provide any type of clarity from our. type of clarity from our perspective versus run-on conversations with 10 or 13 different things to diffuse. So I just would like to clarify the money. So that, so that the community understands, we have spent to date $130,000 of city money. This was not a matching grant. This was money that we chose to spend. Or the Public Works Director and the past city manager chose to spend. Or maybe council chose, but we've already spent that. If you look at the numbers here, you have 2.3 million for construction. And you've got a 3.1 or a 3.2 million dollar project. What's the difference between that is what anyone is talking about? That if you're gonna, if we're gonna proceed with this entire project, all's we're saying is do not spend any public funds. If you choose to seek grants, if you choose another option, I think everyone in the community would have a buy-in on that. What we're saying, and maybe we should ask for it right now, is there anyone else on the council that wants to use or spend city money on these projects?
Yeah, I think we should be clear on our definitions. It's all public funds, but what you're saying is spending local general fund money for which the council has authority and choice as to how the money is to be spent on which program, right?
Yes, sir.
Local money that I think that's what I'm hearing from the citizenry. They don't, with the problems we've got now as a result of the pandemic and just the general problems that a local government has in funding the normal services, that they don't want to see us get locked into something that's going to, you know, deplete the reserve by a million, million and a half dollars.
That's why I thought it was, finally, we had requested this, that we actually have numbers per line item, which will really benefit all five of us as far as helping to make the right choices regarding this monies, no matter, no matter, and I agree with you, Mayor, as to where that money came from. But, but we hadn't had that in the past. Now we do have it.
Right, okay. No, I agree. You and I also have the same concern that we, you know, capital projects have a propensity to overrun. And who picks that up? So is it possible, James, that the council could maybe put one parameter on this that would say we view that the design goes ahead and can be modified depending on, you know, how much time and how far in the future we go. There may be a change of ideas, but that the decisions could be modular, could be segmented.
Right. And that means how it's bid too. It needs to be bid in a modular way. That's very important.
Right. So, you know, to me, it seems like, number one, you know, there are like two or three criteria that are critical, like public safety is obviously at you know, the top of our list. We don't want to do something that's less safe than what we have now. And then, once we get past that, then we have, we don't have enough money to do everything, so it needs to be phased. And then, when it, within a phase, we need to be sure that we have, or the future councils would have the opportunity to say, we wanted to do all of this, but for whatever reasons, financially in particular, we can't afford to do all of this, so we're going to remove, you know, maybe two or three of these modules. And they maybe could be done later when grant money is available or the city, you know, recovers from the pandemic recession. Bill?
Yeah, Mayor, and I think that's really important, James, that I think we're all in agreement here. That really gets to how the bid spec is written. Very important. You know, you can write bid specs that, you know, you cannot disaggregate, you can't understand. And also, the general contractor says, I didn't bid this in a modular way, you know? That's really important that that the bid spec is written. And maybe this is an important enough issue that, that remember, we reviewed the bid spec on the last street program and we had some questions on it? And maybe, maybe in for this one, the bid spec ought to come to council before it goes out.
Okay, yeah, I understand. I think we don't want to lock ourselves into something we aren't prepared for, so I
And a lot of that is how the bid spec is written.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Okay, Randy, before we come back to you, is anyone else who'd like to speak to the question or the proposal that Randy's making, which is to start out with the financial parameters of how this is to be done?
Yeah, Johnny, I do.
Yeah, okay, Ryan.
Well, I just want to point out that how long have we been doing this? And this is the first time we have numbers. And the first time I feel like it's been communicated to our council that we were potentially looking at spending $700,000 plus thousand dollars, that when we approved class four bike lanes and everything else, that it was pretty clear to me that we were not receiving, that we weren't paying anything. So I just want to say this, this feels like it's the first conversation we've had because I don't think the information has been correctly transmitted to us that we were walking down a path of including all these things that were so expensive. So yes, I absolutely agree that I think we ought to have a parameter not to spend more than what is the grant money, especially under our new economic situation. But is the best way to do this to approve everything? And then if we don't get the other grant money to start reducing things? Or is the best way to approve this to say, we're approving $2.3 million worth of construction? And that's the things that we can pay for. And then if we get other grant money, we can add something to the project. Because I'm concerned the public's going to get really confused if what we're really telling them is, don't worry, this is it, but it might change again later because we just found out we don't have enough money to pay for all of it. And your concern about us having only grant money used, well, we thought that was fine, but now it's not fine. But don't worry, we might get more grant money. And then if we get some grant money, aren't we back to this same spot? I mean, aren't we? We still haven't made the, I mean, at what point are we going to say, this is what we can do for 2.3 million? And if we can do more, let's do more.
Just a second, Randy had a comment, and then I'll come to Susan, then back to Bill.
Well, it's a simple thing based on what you and Bill and I had previously said. You know, as a design build company, the most important thing you do is you do a master plan. And then you go back to the client, you say, okay, what can we afford to do? And in, and in a lot of instances, you'll do a phasing. You'll do a phase one, a phase two, a phase three. And, and, but every phase, every aspect of the bid has a, has an amount attached to it. That's why I'm grateful for tonight, for the first time, we have amounts actually attached to each aspect of this project. Now, going back to what Ryan's saying, we could actually go through this tonight and earmark the, the areas that we specifically would like to see money attached to and say that's phase one, phase two, phase three, if we choose, or we may have to come back and, and, and do that more than one time. Based on the fact that we have numbers. We also have numbers on items that we haven't that aren't on this sheet. For instance, the curb cut for the new entrance into the high school. I don't see that budgeted on here. I don't see the left turn lane going into the parking lot for the teachers that they requested. So those are, those are some additional things that we might have to bring back and put into the discussion or into the mix as part of the master plan perspective.
Okay, Susan, you had your hand up?
I think they are on there though, Randy. Just to clarify, I think they are. I, I want to clarify with James, but and I don't mean to take your time, Susan, but just to make sure we're on the same page, I'm looking at, it would be additions. Not in the current budget, but they're on page 1-5 or 5-7. Subtotal for Maricopa Highway. And they are not included. They wouldn't be subtraction, so they're not there yet, but 86,000 for the turn pocket at Pyri and parking lot upgrade. Improved, I mean, it was really hard to find, Randy, 427. So just to tell you, Randy, reading this, not only are we 700,000 plus behind, but if we did those two things, now we're 900,000 plus behind, which I didn't know any of that the last time we talked about any of this.
Okay, I, thank you.
Okay, Susan, you had your hand up, and then Bill, you're next.
Okay, I have, this is what I want to say. Is that we need to look at this as a, as a health and safety project and a climate mitigation project. I want all the council to consider the price of not doing this project right. The price will be that we will just keep, everybody will keep driving everywhere. The price is more wear and tear on the road from cars, building more parking lots. I want you to think about the hidden cost of a city that is primarily geared for people driving everywhere. That's the hidden cost. Okay, and I want, I hope that you read the recommendations from the climate, from our Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee. They are in favor of this project 100% as, as it's, as it was described with the lane reduction. There are some, I did see some beautification things that could be delayed. There are things that can be delayed. But we can't, we should not lose sight of the value of this project. This is not just a perk for a few people on bicycles. This is a far-reaching, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create a truly balanced and healthy long-term health for generations to come. If we don't do it right, we'll continue to have hundreds of parents driving their children to school. There's a cost, a hidden cost associated that we need to consider.
Okay. Fine, yeah, Bill?
To speak to Ryan's concern and perhaps to Randy's, I think it's important, from my point of view, to realize that there is a chicken and egg thing here in terms of if we're going to be applying for grants to try to meet the gap, you've got to have an approved plan to apply for the grant. And so if we start, I mean, we can, we have some priorities that were set that maybe ought to be supplemented in our change. We, we did vote for priorities in January 22, 2019. But I wouldn't want to, if we're gonna, again, I think it's important that you have a plan that matches your grant requests. And if we're gonna, we're not going to be able to apply for the supplemental grant funding if we haven't approved something that will, you know, in terms of what we want to do. And that's why we want to bid it in a modular way. So if we don't get those grants, then we don't do those components.
All right, okay. Let Ryan, Ryan go ahead, refund the bill, or we'll go to Randy.
I was just gonna say, I completely agree. The only, the only problem is we already have the whole plan, right? We have the whole plan. I, I think that we have everything we'd ever want in what's in front of us. If we want to throw everything at it and go, hey, let's get grant money for all of it, that's, that's been built. The problem is, we don't have a plan built we can afford. And I appreciate, I mean, Susan, don't get me wrong. I, I helped build this project with my own bare hands. I think it's a great idea, but I can't make up a million dollar shortfall, which is 10% of the city budget every year on this project under our current conditions.
We might do supplemental grants, Ryan.
Well, fine, then, then, then let's put the whole project out there and see if we can't get the grants in. And then let's, let's car, I mean, when are we going to carve out what we can't afford so we can present to the public, here's what we're going to do? And here's what we hope we can do if we get grant money. That seems appropriate to me of why there's so much confusion all around because but I don't, I don't see this not having an approved plan. We already have the full expenses.
Okay, Randy, your turn.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. But see, this is why I'm glad you're managing the conversation this way tonight. So I just wanted to touch on the health and safety aspect of this because I agree with Susan that this is, this is very important to understand. If you look at, if you look at the safety aspect of this project, and you look at any of the reports, and I have a number of them sitting in front of me, that talk about where the unsafest area of this community is, it's not Maricopa Highway. There's some at the Y, but the majority of the safety issues that we have in this community is the downtown corridor. That's the biggest, I mean, in any, any Tim's report, any of the reports that I have show that clearly demonstrate that there's more accidents from the, from the downtown corridor than there is anywhere else in our community. So again, looking at this project, I appreciate the fact that we're spending, we could spend up to $2 million in the downtown corridor. So if I'm going to be looking at staying within budget, I'm going to look at where do we want to prioritize the safety of this community? And I would say we should be looking at the downtown corridor and then coming back to Maricopa Highway as a phase two, phase three. We can still put bike lanes in on Maricopa Highway. We may not go to a, to a stage four type bike lane, but we could still achieve a bike lane on that highway. So again, if we look at safety, I think the most important is we look at where the multitude of our accidents and where the multitude of our problems are. And, and I just, I don't want us to lose sight of safety.
Yeah, but the injury accidents, I would think that the Maricopa Highway has had more severe accidents over time.
No, actually, it hasn't.
What report? Maybe I need to look and see the report you're reading, but, okay, who else was in the queue or? I'd like to respond to what Ryan was saying. Ryan, the overall design, you're correct. And I think that the Safe Streets people and people who've been looking at this for a long time have come up with a whole bunch of good ideas and some maybe that are more controversial than others, and some more expensive than others. But we don't have to do them all, but if you have at least a kind of a master plan, like Randy said, as to what you're considering, then go through and, and apply the criteria of safety, which Randy was just addressing, and then phasing. And I would, right now, my inclination is to phase it out by the high school where the kids are as the first phase, and then not to do more than what we know we can pay for outside of local taxpayers' money. And over time, there are a number of sources we could reach, you know, reach out to, federal government, state government, private money. And, you know, things like the beautification, and those could be added in. Right now, I believe there is enough money to put in bike, pedestrian, and the road diet out, including the entry into the Nordoff High School parking lot. That could be engineered in a way that we can do that within the money that we currently have. We wouldn't be able to do a whole lot more. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. I tend to agree with that. I want to point out a very important difference between Ojai Avenue and the four-lane Maricopa Highway. If you want to go to downtown Ojai, you can take quiet residential streets. There's many ways to get safely to any business in Ojai without even going down Ojai Avenue. If you're a family riding your bike, you know, with a bunch of kids, you normally wouldn't, you either go on the sidewalk or you would take one of the quieter residential streets. I don't know very many parents that would send their kids down a four-lane highway, and the only other choice is Kuyama, which is too difficult for most kids. You know, Maricopa Highway is the critical link between Ojai and Miners Oaks. You go, you go down the bike trail, you cross the intersection, and then you want to negotiate Maricopa Highway, which is fine for seasoned cyclists. I've said this before. The protected bike lanes are for the vulnerable members of our community. They're not for the experienced cyclist or the elite cyclists, you know, in their little outfits. They're for regular, for parents and their children so that they can go from Miners Oaks to Ojai and from Ojai back to Miners Oaks safely. That's why that, that section, that it's a seven-eighth of a mile section is so important.
So I'm probably going to be the one who's going to be doing the most showing or demonstrating the other side. But so quickly, here's the Tim's report from 6/1/2008 to 12/13/2018. In the 10.5-year period from June 1, 2008 through December 31, there were eight accidents involving an injury of pedestrian or cyclist on Highway 33 between Oakview and Laramore. No, none were fatal. One pedestrian sustained a severe injury. In the past years, 10.5 years, there have been 0.06 injuries involving a pedestrian or cyclist. So again, when you're thinking of putting $1 million into a specific area that doesn't necessarily isn't necessarily the safest or the unsafest area of your community, that's all I'm trying to say here. The unsafe areas are not on 33. Now, Susan makes good points. If I had my family and I was writing down the 33, yeah, would it be great if I had a bike lane to travel in? Would it be safer? I'm not going to say it's not. But how many citizens in Ojai live at the Five Point? They don't. They're in the county. So if Susan's saying that we should be spending $1 million on Maricopa Highway for all of the citizens that live in Oakview or live above Kuyama, then maybe we need to take a survey of those folks and let them have a say as to do they believe that this is what they want. Because that's, that's what I'm hearing, is we're going to create a bike lane for a group of people that For a group of people that aren't our citizens. And we're not gonna consider the citizens in our community where the unsafe streets are. That, that's all I'm saying regarding her comments on that.
Um, yeah, Bill, you have that.
Okay, um, I I think what we're, what we're getting to here is another issue. That needs to be stated, and I've stated it before. This piece of highway. Is a remnant, out of character. Highway design. That was built in spite of. This community's opposition to this kind of highway. We stopped it everywhere else except this. In our, our predecessors. And this is not. Everywhere else in Ojai, we have traffic calming by design. Yeah, most other places in in Ojai, um, you know, uh, we don't have this kind of. Of highway design that was built. To. Do something that is out of character for our community. This, this, this highway design, as Mr. Crabtree. Outlined in it in our history. Was built as part of the freeway mentality. And it's time to get. You know, to move away from that and to by design encourage. The kind of multimodal traffic. You know, different kind, you know, bicycles, pedestrians and cars. Streets are not just for the cars. That's the essential view. That we've evolved to. Therefore, how best to. Support the life of the community. And I think if we want to, you know, encourage the connections between Ojai and Miners Oaks, going to the meadows. Go, uh, having kids out of cars, not having the, they're being dropped off. We have to design for that. And I just, I just think that um. This opportunity is resources that we've been given primarily motivated by moving away. From this type of of of, you know, for lack of a better word, is basically kind of an Orange County highway design. That many of us are here to avoid. And I think it's, um, I think it would be a real asset and amenity to the community. To um, have uh, this, I think, historical mistake corrected. I don't think any of us would ever want this kind of highway design. In our community, and historically, we know it was put in there. As part of the mentality that was gonna bring a freeway up into this community that was was stopped. So I I think it's a historic opportunity. Um, to get back to the character defining elements that 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 we love about this place, and. I think that's, you know, it's more than just. It's also about the underlying uh, nature of our community that I think is enhanced by moving in this direction on the Maricopa Highway.
So, so Mayor, I could, I I I could agree with that a hundred percent, Bill. I I don't disagree with that. What I'm trying to say here is. Safety should be the primary concern of what we're trying to do with this money. And and enhancing the ability to ride your bike, the ability to walk. And all of the different modes of transportation. I don't, I I'm not against that. I don't think anyone is. What we're looking at is we have a limited amount of money. And for some reason, we placed a priority on this. Area versus on other areas of the community that it's needed more. So I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done. I'm saying is what's the priority of it? And I don't have a sense that it should be priority one. I could see two, I could see three, but I think the downtown corridors and all of the safety modifications that need to take place. On the one fifty. Is where I would put my, my money and where I would put my effort. So no one is saying no to what you're saying. In fact, we'd all be in agreement with it. In fact, no one has said no to any, any statement that that anyone's made yet. It's prioritizing the money and the safety of the community.
Well, that's phase, this is the same conversation we had three years ago.
Uh, right.
Right, but I I guess I I lean towards what Bill's saying. I I think that, Randy, when you, when you think that the highway out there, if you look at the, the numbers. We, our numbers aren't that big, although they make us. Can, whether we've been called the unsafest or second unsafest or something, you know, I'm not sure in terms of of numbers.
That's a misnomer also.
Yeah, right, but one of the reasons why you don't have as many out there, it seems like, but they're, the one they did it, you know, talk to Fred Favre. You know, under you, uh, Little Freddie going away from swim team, uh, was killed there. Uh, what, within the last year, we're being sued by somebody where a lady was walking across and got hit. It. We would have even more, except most people look at that and say, I'm standing the hell away from that part of town. Uh, and the, I think what I'm hearing, Bill, Susan, I know my feeling is, is that if we make that a safer place to be. Particularly for the young people, whether they live in the city or live in the neighborhood, I mean, the school serves everybody, not just our city. And the kids come there and a lot of them are brought by their parents because of fear of them being injured, uh, if they go on their bicycle, so. Uh, so this is the argument that gets our discussion that gets us to which phase do we do first? Uh, we were all, we don't want to spend general fund money, we, but. Now we're, we gotta give the staff some direction, and it sounds like what you're asking right now, James, is. Uh, what approval for the overall master plan, not that we're gonna do everything in it and go specific. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we start with that, and then we've got one where we want to get reimbursed for the money we've spent already. And we've got some design money that we have to uh, apply for, is that correct? Uh, to get reimbursed, or do we uh, to spend it?
No, we're, we are actively, in fact, we actually, we're, we're actively seeking reimbursement uh, from the grants that we have, and in fact, we got a reimbursement. Uh, yesterday, I believe, so we're, we're doing that already.
Okay, so you had what, three or four things you need out of this? Should we start at the top and then have, discuss each one of them as we go and come back? Just what Randy's pointing out, it's, it's a matter of deciding. The phases as well as the priority, so. The first thing on there says to receive a report on the status and funding. Okay, we got that, right?
Yep.
The second is to adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of a claim with the Ventura Transportation Commission to allocate transportation developments. That's a, that's a grant application?
Uh, oh, yes, that's the um. That's the, we had, we had made a funding uh, change to allow for the right of way acquisition. So that, that's just a resolution allowing that.
Yes.
Okay, well, does anybody have any uh? Concerns with that particular request? If not, we have a, do we need, we need a motion on that, right?
Yes, as it's a resolution that would shift around grant funding.
Do you want us to make a motion one, one at a time, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, I think so, because they're different things.
Yes.
We'll narrow it down to what Randy is talking about.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to receive a report on the status and funding of the active transportation program project. Including the sixty percent design and provide. Uh, any feedback.
Second.
Okay.
I, I don't think you guys got the memo.
Yeah.
We're putting it out last so we can have more discussion.
Well, the feedback's gonna continue, okay, so, but to receive. The motion is to receive and file the report. The request is, is to give staff some feedback, which is uh, is sort of an umbrella on the whole thing. Yeah, so, okay, we got a motion to receive and file, and we have a second. Any further discussion on filing the report? If not, okay, uh, saying, hearing no objection, so ordered. Let's go to number two, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing with the Transportation Commission. Do we have a motion for that?
Ryan should do that one, I think. Ryan? Where are you?
Well, why do you?
Ryan doesn't.
Why would, why would I, you mean, because Randy's on the V C T C, that's why?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what she's alluding to, but that's.
On the V C T C, make that motion.
Randy, that's Randy's, that's Randy's, Randy's on V C.
I'll, I'll move approval.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve it, any just discussion on that. And James, this is simply to ask for realignment of the funding we already have to use it for right of way, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion for number three.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't passed number two yet, right? Okay, uh, it, there, uh, we do need, do we need a roll call on that?
Yeah, because it's a resolution tied to funding.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Hi, Gail.
Okay.
Uh, now we can't hear you, Gail.
Oh.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Very good.
Oh, my dog's bark.
Uh, it keeps. I'll, I'll call the names, Gail, you can take, you can uh.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz.
Yes.
Mayor Johnston.
Yeah. Okay, number three, says authorize the city manager to separate the existing Alta Planning and Design Contract scope from the right of way work as required. Have no additional cost.
Move to approve.
What?
Move to approve.
Okay, good, I like that.
I've been studying this all week.
Second. I'll second, okay, it's moved and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, I can, can the city manager clarify what he's trying to do there?
Yeah. James?
Yes. Um, let me find my uh. Notes quickly. It's not adding any cost or uh, or adding any scope, it's separating the scope to allow for the um.
That's good.
For Alta to uh, perform right of way work. That we're requiring, so it's uh, no additional money, no additional work, it's just uh, allowing it to be separated out. Uh. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, James, is this right of way work being done? Is this just to, to process? Uh, the, you know, legal descriptions and things, or is this actually having to negotiate and buy property?
Uh, this is actually for right of way acquisition, it's um, and the, the bulk of their work is gonna be making sure it meets federal. Uh, that the right of ways meet the guidelines.
Okay, so that's an unknown cost right now, right?
And, and is there any specificity to it? Is there any? Specific areas that we're looking at purchasing this right of way?
This is, this is all inclusive for the project.
But are little pieces here and there that are uh, still in, okay?
Yes, my understanding is that part of the work that Alta is proposing to do is to figure out exactly which pieces of the right of way we need to acquire. I, as I understand it from my last conversation with Greg, there are portions of the right of way that are uh, unclear as to exactly who owns what.
Yeah.
And who pays, does the grant pay for the, the purchasing of those right of ways?
Yes, the grant, the grant has a hundred and five thousand, I believe, for right of way acquisition.
And the more they spend on that, Randy, the less they have to spend on the other stuff that you.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, is if we don't know specifically what they're trying to purchase, how would we? Um, it may come back to us as, no, we need another hundred thousand dollars. Um.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Well, I think what happens is, Randy, is that that may be uh, an unavoidable cost if it is a, a spite strip or something that is obstructing something we're trying to do, in which case we can't do it. Uh, but when the money is spent, that comes out, and we've set the parameter that we don't want any, any uh, module of this thing. Uh, to exceed the uh, grant funding, if they'll have to get work.
I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, I, I guess what, how I'm looking at it is, if I was bidding something and I didn't know. What I was bidding, I would just throw a number at it and say, hopefully they'll accept it. That's what I'm kind of hearing when I said I needed specifics, but if we're all in agreement that we'll cross that bridge when we reach it. We'll cross it when we do.
Yeah, bridges are very expensive though, aren't they?
They are.
You want any money left, okay. Uh, on this one, there's no additional cost, and it is merely separating the, the functions out of the contract, so. Uh, if there's no further discussing, uh, do I hear any objection to the motion? Not hearing it, so ordered, okay, now I guess we get to the. Meat of it here, authorize staff to pursue further grant funding to support the ATP project costs.
Who can approve? Yeah, yes, pursue further grant funding.
Yeah, but grant funding, uh, James, is there money out there that doesn't require local match?
So we've identified a couple of grant opportunities. Um, some do have a match requirement, so, you know, there is a potential match requirement, it's not unusual, you know, to, to have about a twenty percent match requirement. We have, we have identified uh, a grant that's available that has two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In funding with no match, so, you know, there. We know that there's at least one that we can pursue right of way, and then a couple others that we can look into whether, whether we'd be able to pursue them.
If the council directs you to at least look for them, and they still have to come back here, so Randy and I'll get a bite out of it before anybody makes commitment, because we're not looking to spend more general fund money.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, like you said, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall. So it'd be interesting to see how we apply that if it happens.
Yeah.
Well, Suzie, is your motion for the, apply for the no match grant?
Okay, is there a second?
Um. Uh. I think we should consider both, because I don't know. Uh, why, uh, I I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to know what I'm seconding.
Well, I just, I, I was, I, I did, the, the note, it says authorize staff to pursue further grant funding to support the ATP project costs. It doesn't stipulate, um, don't pursue the ones with no match funding, so I would say, uh, make a motion to approve as stated. And then we, it comes back to council if it requires matching funds. Wouldn't that work?
Would you amend your motion to see, to satisfy another concerns? Randy and Ryan. That the applications could go forward. But there would be, there would be no commitment. Until each individual grant came back to council for individual approval.
I don't have a problem with that as long as it does, the timeline doesn't jeopardize the funding, so James, can you?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable and we'll work with that.
Yeah, okay.
I, I will second on that understood amendment to your motion.
I'm fine with that, if, if James assures us it doesn't jeopardize the funding.
Yes, thanks.
Is that jeopardizing the funding of the no match grant, or? I don't quite.
Either one, either one.
Okay, well, I don't know.
Like, like James, James, maybe say it again, or you said made sense to me.
I think, I think, you know, I think uh, if it, if there's a grant that requires a match, we would bring, we will bring that back to council before making any sort of commitment.
But then we, you have to do that anyway, right? It's illegal not to do that. The direction that we would be giving you, I guess, uh, I'd be willing to give you, you know, or to divide the question to the no match grant and say, go get it. Uh, then I guess if the council, they want you to start pursuing grants that would require some local money.
Yeah.
Okay, can I amend my motion? So that if there's no match required, James doesn't have to bring it back, is that okay, Bill?
Yeah, I'd be all right with it.
We still have to approve it, but it, but we're saying that if there is no local match. Uh, that we're supportive of, of finding those kinds of uh, resources. We're not asking at this point for them to go out and figure out something that we have to put twenty percent up for. Now that's, you can do that on the second motion.
Right, so I, I, I agree with that, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, so you got a motion to move and second to direct staff to pursue the, uh, grants that require no local match. Uh, is there any further discussion on that?
So there's gonna be a second motion on the other one, is that what you said?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're, we divided the question, then we'll talk about the second half of it.
All right, I approve it, yeah.
Okay, so if there's no objection to that, the staff has their marching orders, go ahead and get all that free money you can get, but. Now we're gonna talk about the other, okay. This is the one where you're asking them to go after grants that have local match required?
Yeah, that's just my ba, a backup, you know.
Okay, is there a second to that?
But I wouldn't say, I wouldn't throw that out the window, because we don't know where we're gonna be financially. And we don't know what's possible, so I wouldn't close that door, I would keep it open and then, you know, bring it back to council. Where are we?
We're looking for a second to your motion.
Well, I, I. I mean, what are we talking about? Like, if the staff goes out and finds a two hundred thousand dollar matching grant that we're authorizing them to put in two hundred, to agree that, to bind us to two hundred thousand, or to bring it back just to council, or can they? Apply for it without it being that we're gonna get it if we get it approved? I, I don't know, I would say this, we could maybe modify it to this, that we are not going to be bound by any money above what the grant money is. But if there's a grant out there that we can apply for and somehow find out if we got it without being locked into spending any money, then I suppose that would be okay. Because we can come back.
Approve that, Ryan.
Well, I don't, I'm, I'm, then I'm not really sure what we're approving now.
Let me, let me see if I can clarify this, okay?
Ryan is correct, Ryan's correct.
Let me, let me please try to clarify. Uh, Ryan's question, I think, is, is what is the distinction here? We are saying, as the councilor said, go ahead, staff. We are saying, as the councilor said, go ahead, staff, and look at grants that do not require general fund matching, so, uh, if the staff finds one of those, great, we still have to prove it, because that's the law. Now, what's, now what Suzie is suggesting is that the staff also be directed to go look for money anyplace, uh, including those that would require us to put up local non-general fund, or, uh, local general fund money.
Yeah, well, I think, I think my clarification is just that, I don't mind the staff looking, as long as we're not bound to that money beforehand, if they find one that's, again, two hundred thousand dollars and we have to match with two hundred thousand, if they find that and want to bring it back to us, then I don't have a problem with them finding it.
Okay, so, but I don't think, I, I, what they're looking for is whether or not we're supportive of coming up with, with money, right now, I personally am not.
Yeah, I, I-
But I don't have any problem with them looking for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess, I guess you're gonna say what I am, Johnny, I'd hate to miss, you know, if there's one out there that's, I, I don't know, I can't imagine how we would be able to do any type of matching right now, but I-
I have a question.
Just like, let Ryan finish, Suzie, let Ryan finish, I'll come back to you.
I'm not against looking for it, I'm not against looking for it, but I think it might be a fruitless endeavor or a waste of our staff time if we're not saying we're going to approve it if they find it. Yes, James, let me ask you this, let me just ask James, James, is there any point in us approving authorization to look if we're not going to approve the funding later, is all that, does all that do is make our staff waste time? Or is that worthwhile to keep that open as far as the staff-
That's your honor, leading the witness.
Well, I'm trying to, I mean, I don't know.
I know, okay.
It says it's a good, like, yes, keep the flexibility open, we might figure something out, I'd say, hey, I don't want to handcuff him, but if he says no, there's no point in it.
You're up, and then I'll come to you, Suzie, James.
Boy, that, yeah, it's, I, we have to look to see if there are grants that don't require a match, so I, you know, we have to look, uh, we have to spend a little bit of time doing that, so, uh, I, I think it's clear that we have to, or that we can look for ones that don't require a match, if we find a great one that requires a small match, we'll bring it back to council, it, it seems, it seems like-
You need the authority for that, right, you've got that.
Yes.
That's what I had in mind, what James just said.
Okay.
A large grant that requires a match, I wasn't thinking of two hundred thousand matching two hundred thousand, I was thinking sometimes twenty thousand is well spent, we spend twenty thousand dollars on all kinds of things.
Okay, well, I don't think that, that James needs direction to do it, he'll be doing that as just part of his normal duties, if he sees something good, he'll bring it to our attention, but if we tell him to go find one, then we're telling him to go to do, do some extra work, that maybe, uh, at least I'm not yet prepared at the present-
I just thought-
Randy.
Okay. So I just wanna, um, uh, I just want to touch on the time spent doing this, that, um, I'm all for looking for funding, uh, with, with no match, um, and I'm sure as they're going through these grant applications or these grant funding sources, that they're gonna say match or no match, so I think that that's pretty simple. Um, my concern would just be the time spent, and if it's gonna be time spent out of James' office, um, I'd have no problem with that. If it's time spent out of our public work director's office, I'd have a lot of problems with that, because I, I, I think we need a, a bigger focus on the grants that we already have, and the fact that the city conditions demand that Greg Grant spend more time, um, working on, on his assigned work, not all of this grant stuff that's out there, so, that's my concern.
Suzie?
I really think we can leave this up to James, James' good judgment.
Okay.
You know, that he won't o, overspend valuable staff time-
I second that.
He's a small matching grant, that he will use his good sense and bring it back to us, so just, you know, leave it like that.
Okay, so the matter is concluded, um, so, okay, where, where are we, guys, you wanna talk more about what?
Let's talk money.
Well, we, we talk money. We can't afford it all, so it's a question of whether or not we're changing the, the order of the phasing. I'm with Bill, I think being out there on the Maricopa makes sense, even though, uh, you know, there are some sidewalks in other areas that maybe we could also help.
You know, it's funny, I, I told Bill the other day, we're, we're, we, we talked about this, I said, I never got the memo on the lane closure. You guys all got one, I didn't get one, I'd sure like to see it, um, how that became so important in this funding of this project, but aside from that, Mayor, um, I think what we should do is, um, we know the exact cost of Maricopa Highway, I think the more important issue is the, is the funding that needs to take place, to me, in the downtown corridor, and that's close to two million dollars. So I think we need to take a look at that and ask ourselves, where do we see that money being more wisely spent? For instance, uh, the Shady Lane sidewalk and infill, um, out to the east end, on the south side of, of the, of the one fifty? Um, I think that that's in the, uh, Ojai Avenue improvements.
Yeah, I got Randy, one dash five, about halfway down.
Yeah, um, and I'm just, oh, um, you know, remove sidewalk infill from Shady Lane to Gridly Road, Gridly Road. I think that right now, where we, where our hotel industry on the east end of town, um, actually has, has, has a heavier lift of getting their client and our, our tourists from that end of town to the west end of town. And I don't know why that's not a priority, or why that shouldn't be put in here into the, um, the Ojai Avenue improvements. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is I needed to understand, the improvements that have already been made, are those subtracted from the budget? So, um, James, maybe you can help me understand that better?
Yeah, let, let me quickly say, so the sidewalk infill from Shady Lane to Gridly is included in that two million dollar budget? The reason, what we're trying to show there, how we showed that a negative one fifty-five next to that improvement, is if we took it out, that would reduce the cost that much. So that, that is included, uh, those, those items that are listed with negatives, those are in the bid, or, you know, in the design currently, but they can be removed, and that's how much we'd save.
And James, what you're saying is, if we have enough money, uh, to do phase one, which would include these things, but if we wanted to shave it back, this is where you could, how much you could-
Yes, exactly, if we wanted to start looking at, you know, parts we could take out, that, that's how much we'd save from those, so, um, so the infill from Shady Lane to Gridly is included in there with the estimated cost of about a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, and I know you had a second question that I'm trying to remember now.
Well, Mayor, could I ask a question on this issue?
Yes, Bill.
Okay, uh, this is an example to me of how you write the bid spec, where you have these specific things, and for the, whoever's bidding, they price these as a deducts.
Yes.
So, right now, they're estimates, and, and I guess, Randy, what I'm trying to get at is this is why I think it's so important, because these are just guesses, and we know what happens when we actually get bids.
Right.
Uh, it can be very different, so I think this is a good taxonomy of how we want to have the bids spent, the bid spec written, so that we'll have more information when the time comes, exactly what these deducts are, right now, we're just guessing.
So, Mayor, what I'm hearing is, we're gonna, we should bid the whole project, and that comes to what, three point one, three point two million? And then once it's bid, come back to council, and then at that point, start the conversation regarding deducts.
Is that what's being asked, uh, James, or are we talking about just what we've got money for right now that we believe we have?
So-
I'd like to see the bid, and with the deducts.
What we, what we originally recommended was, do the bid, uh, with what's included, but set it up so we can remove things if needed, or if we don't get additional grant funding.
And the, and the bid would have those deducts in the bid spec?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and then, but obviously, you know, council has the opportunity to make that decision now, so, so we wanted to set it up where, you know, council can, can do it either way, but that's, that was what we recommended, was get it designed with those included at this time.
And the itemized components and deducts in the bid spec?
Yes.
So the answer, Randy, to your question is, yeah, they, they're bidding the whole thing, and then you can mix and match, I guess, you know?
Right, and I also think if we do it that way, Mayor, um, first of all, it's, 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 um, gonna end, um, any form of arguments or any, um, negative interactions that we might have tonight, because I don't want that. I, 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 I want us to, I want us five to look at this project and make the best decisions and choices for our community, we can't do that without some accuracy in numbers.
And that's why I agree with you, Randy, that's why it's so important-
Right.
You think we're on the same page here, because, you know, we both have bid complex projects.
Right.
And you're basically over a barrel with a contractor, unless you're at the front end, make sure you, so you structure that bid spec properly.
It seems like in the Mar, in the Maricopa Highway, we have some negatives that James has, has identified, he's line itemed, if you reduce this, reduce that, reduce this, that, um, you have quite a bit of money that you could save there, probably close to five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And it seems like in the Ojai Avenue improvements, that that turnaround is closer to seven hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, again, there's the flexibility of twelve, of twelve, of one point two million dollars, if we have some accuracy in the numbers. So I'd be more than willing to wait, um, to see what the bids come in at, um, that would be, that would be my choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're in agreement, then.
Well, I'd like to hear from Ryan and Suzie.
I want to say this, why the hell do we have a special meeting tonight for an hour and forty minutes to agree to the same four things that were written on the front and not make any changes? I thought we were here to reduce this number to where we wanted it, so we'd get a bid together. I have gone through this entire bid, we have all these numbers, now we're saying it's not the real numbers, the public has no idea what we're agreeing to, we can't tell them right now what the total cost will be, we're hoping we get additional grant money, we don't know whether we're doing a lane reduction, and we have no idea what the priorities are, we're gonna wait till later, it's been five years, I was under the assumption that that-
I don't agree with that summation of the-
I agree with that either.
We don't have, we don't have the numbers that we bid it.
Yeah.
If the numbers we have are completely useless, then why did we make our staff go through and create all these numbers? I mean, I just, I, I-
Ryan, you're mistaken.
I thought, I thought the point was to try and get us to where we wanted to be, we have three hundred or so community reach out, outreach emails that say we're overspending, and we don't want to spend public money and all this, and we are leaving tonight. I mean, I get we're kicking the can down the road, but I don't know why we had a special meeting to not make any actual, I mean, we didn't change any decisions from what we-
We put a structure on it not to spend public money, we put a structure on that.
But I mean, that's one decision that we could have done on last Tuesday, I thought we were here to-
Call for a public workshop with a discussion, which we provided, I didn't, uh-
Right.
Mayor, my opinion, I've offered it, I may be wrong, I'm entitled to it unfortunately, as wrong as it may be. No, I, Mayor?
Not wrong, go ahead, Randy.
Mayor, I, I don't disagree with Ryan, I came into it tonight thinking the same thing, but that's why, that, that's why you have a discussion, um, like-
Like a whole other workshop.
Yeah, and, and actually it is, and, and it's in-depth, and, and, um, it's not gonna change the minds of the, of the people that do not want to see the lane reduction, um, and hopefully there was enough information conveyed about safety throughout the entire city. There's one other point that I, that I'd like to make, that I wished we had in hindsight done. For instance, when we talk about bicycle-friendly streets and pedestrian-friendly streets, one of the, um, the avenues that, that I think was neglected in all of this complete street dialogue and discussion with this funding source was Grand Avenue. And, uh, you know, my wife and I have been riding our bikes a lot, and I'll tell you what, um, if we had taken that thirteen feet on the right-of-way on the south side of Grand Avenue and looked at that as usually, of trying to amend that corridor for more bicycle-friendly usage with this money, I would, I, I, I would have thought that'd been a, a, um, a better discussion for us regarding that, so what I'm saying is, in hindsight, there's other areas of this community that could have utilized this money differently or better. For instance, there's also no lighting on this, and if there's one thing the downtown corridor has, it has a lot of dark spots. It has a lot of areas that whether you're driving, walking, or biking, that you have an opportunity of hitting somebody. And again, that wasn't addressed in any of this, uh, funding either, so I don't know if we can add things or if we want to, but I underst, but I, I understand Ryan's frustration, um, but I think we're heading in the right direction personally, I, I, I think hard numbers are better to look at than soft numbers, so let's harden them.
Suzie, you have your hand up.
Um, it was my understanding that only Ojai Avenue is part of the active transportation plan, just Ojai Avenue from Gridly to Elro Blar. I would love to talk about Grand Avenue, I share all Randy's concerns, but I thought Grand Avenue was not part of this discussion.
I think you are correct.
Well, we're not, I brought it up as a, for instance, we're not discussing it.
Well, we're not discussing it, but we're, it's not eligible for the grant money.
It's not, yeah.
The, uh, you know, I've heard a lot, uh, about all these people that are reaching out to us, but there are two, uh, major groups that have organized themselves to, for this outreach. One group that doesn't want to see anything, uh, done to the four lanes out by the high school, there's another group that doesn't want to see anything done in the downtown center of the village. Most of the businesses I've talked to, and a lot of the citizenry, are concerned that we're gonna mess up our, our kind of old-timey, authentic, uh, major attraction, the, down at the arcade and the bell tower. So, you know, we can't lump all of this outreach from all these people, I mean, it, it is orchestrated, the most, many of the letters are just, you know, cut and paste. And I think we're gonna have another opportunity to give them all a chance to weigh in, but I thought at the city council meeting, we talked about, what are we gonna do about the cost? Because there is one group that is saying, if we're broke, if we're talking about cutting services, or reducing things in the outreach program to community groups, then why are we talking about spending general fund money on something that, you know, we don't want? Well, they don't want it, but I think most of us don't want to spend money we don't have. So tonight was to put some para, I thought, to put parameters on this, so that we can kind of look at our constituents in the eye and say, we have not, uh, you know, bought a pig and a goat, we have not approved something that we can't afford. Uh, it may turn out that what we designed, we can't afford, but we haven't approved it until we get the bid. Okay, thank you for listening, you've been a great audience. Okay, who's next?
Mayor, I agree with you, I, like I said, I think we reached a good point tonight.
Yeah.
I have a comment.
I agree too, I think in five minutes on Tuesday, we all would probably agree we don't want to spend any public money, that's all. I mean, I, I got, I got five phone calls today, everybody's wanting to talk about what we're cutting, what we're adding, what we're doing with the meeting tonight, two lanes, four lanes, this part, that part, specifics in the plans, new maps, the whole thing, and the answer tonight is, well, don't worry, we decided we might not spend any more money.
I have a-
Senator, we wouldn't-
No, we've agreed, we've agreed, we're not gonna spend-
No general fund money, right.
No, we agreed we would potentially get another opportunity to decide what we're gonna spend after we might get more grant money, we don't know whether we're adding or subtracting from this project, it's based on grant money, which I have, which I am okay with.
Which is not money, right.
I just, I just don't really know where we're going to, um, I mean, I just, I, I, the people I talked to in the public want to know, what, which I, I think is reasonable, is what is this proposal? And there, there, I guess the reality of the answer to that right now is, it's very much still a work in progress, so hold on, we'll let you know soon enough.
I think where we are is that we have a general plan for what we would like to see designed, and we have a bunch of people who disagree with different elements. And we, as a council, say we are not gonna spend more money than we have for this purpose, and so we gotta have more information, we have to put it out to bid, but you can't put it out to bid unless you have a design. So I think Bill said it earlier, it's kind of a chicken and the egg, and the thing I think comes out of this evening's meeting that's positive, is what Bill said about the, you know, let's be sure that the bid document makes clear to those who are bidding that they have to do this in a way that's gonna give us that flexibility. And you, we may have a majority who don't want to do some of these things that are in there, or we may end up be right back where we started, which is,
Right.
Some people don't want it out at the high school, and some people don't want it downtown, that's why they elect us to, to sit here on Tuesday nights and struggle with this, Randy.
So Mayor, just want, just my, my last comment is, is again, I, I, I think we have a consensus, and, and, and I'm comfortable with it, I think something else that we could do, um, you know, I was looking at the, at the report here, and the actual last time that there was any type of community outreach, uh, we had none in twenty nineteen. We might have had some council meetings, but we actually did not go out into the public arena and hold some discussions, but we, as a council, us five, who live downtown, are gonna be recommending a million-dollar project on people who live on the west end of our community, and I don't know if we've reached out to that group enough and to get their input, they're the ones that are gonna be more adversely impacted than we are. We're all gonna be impacted, good or bad, but I would like to see a little more outreach to those groups of people, the business corridor and the community that lives behind bonds. those groups of people, the business corridor and the community that lives behind Vons. I don't know if we want to go outside of our community and actually go into Miners Oaks, but I think we could do a little, we have a little more time. It wouldn't hurt if James could think about how he could do that.
Well, isn't that what the demonstration project's about?
Yes, that's what the.
Well, the problem with the demonstration project is we're not going to be back in school 100%. We're not, we're not going to have the activities that can really demonstrate the impacts based on the fact that there's no school. So I, I don't know how you do a, a quantifying, quantifiable measurement of impacts when you don't have the impacts that should be there to measure. I mean, it's a tough one.
Randy, we have the data from 2019. They're going to have, there's plenty of traffic even with school not in session. There's plenty of traffic on Friday morning. If you go out there at different times of day, there's plenty of traffic to study. And we're, and, and the, and the demonstration project is six months. And it's like, it's possible that school will be back in session toward the end of the year. So it's a long project. And it includes outreach. Part of that project is speaking to all the people in the neighborhood. Some of us are actually going out into the neighborhood and we're going to be out there when people walk by to answer questions. That's the whole point of the demonstration project for people to understand it.
Well, I'll give, I'll give you my last for instance. I was getting a blood test.
We had several last ones, Randy, tonight.
I know. I was giving, I was getting a blood test. This is, but, but this is interesting. I was getting a blood test right there on Maricopa Highway. So I'm there at a quarter to seven, getting in line. There's one gentleman in front of me. And I said to him, I go, so what do you think? And I'm looking out on, on the, on the 33 and it's pretty quiet. And a friend drives by on a bicycle and she waves to me and I wave back, you know? And so I go to the gentleman, I go, hey, so what do you think of this ATP? Seriously, he looks at me and he goes, so what's ATP? And I go, so I, I get into a conversation with him and he, and I go, so what do you think? Do you need 10 feet? Do you need 20 feet to ride your bike? He goes, I need three feet. And he goes, I ride my bike every day on that street. I don't need any more than three. So this conversation is going to continue. And, and hopefully when it comes back, we make good choices.
Okay, let's not, I think we've pretty well covered it.
I want equal time with Randy. I want.
I think you've had equal time.
I want everyone that's involved with weighing in on this project to take a group of, of kids, all ages, up and down that highway during the time that school would normally start and the time that school would normally end. I want them to take a group, not just one person needing three feet, but that's the challenge, right with 10.
Well, that's the problem with your, that's the problem with your conversation is the fact that the only time that there's a large group of people together, kids riding bikes, is when you coordinate it. So otherwise there is no.
Do I have a margin there? Wash debate.
That's what I'm saying. I'm done.
Motion to adjourn?
I said.
Susan, you've talked, you and Randy have both had lots of time.
Normal school hours. That is the true.
You and Randy can argue about this later. It's Phil's turn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Okay, motion moved and seconded, all in favor.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
See ya.